I'd like to call this June Board of Education meeting. First quarter of business, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Absolutely.
Mr. Beal. Second. Second, Ms. Taylor, all in favor? For tonight's opening of motion, I decided to focus on graduation season. And most of you have seen postings, pictures, videos of all the graduations across our county and other counties as well as the country. Trigger warning. But we already in our county celebrated Montgomery Community College's graduation and the Early College graduation. And this week, we'll be celebrating the Montgomery Learning Academy as well as Montgomery Central Hospital graduation. So tonight's message is called Run with Joy, and I'm sure some of y'all have seen this. At Clemson University's 2025 graduation, a single moment stole the spotlight and touched hearts around the world. Grace Clements, a graduate of the Clemson Life Program for students with intellectual disabilities, ran across the street with pure excitement and leapt into the arms of her father, Clemson University's president Jim Clements. The hug was so full of joy that it knocked him to the ground, but no one cared about the fall. All anyone could see was love, pride, and unstoppable spirit. This moment is more than just a viral video. It's a powerful reminder that joy should never be measured, filtered from hell back. Grace's leap wasn't just a hug, it was a declaration. I did it. It was a kind of raw, unfiltered emotion we often shy away from showing. In a world where we're told to act composed, reserved, and perfect, Grace taught us all something very deeply human and true. Celebrate yourself fully, love out loud, leap if you feel like leaping. Whether you're crossing a stage, finishing a goal, or simply surviving a hard day, you've earned the right to feel proud. You've earned the hug, the joy, the moment. Don't be afraid to let it show. So what are our takeaways? Celebrate without apology. Your milestones matter, bigger smile. Let love be loud. Life is short. Don't hold back your pride, your hugs, or your gratitude. Run your own race. Grace's story is proof that success looks different for everyone, and that's something worth celebrating. Celebrate someone else's milestones this week with the same kind of joy and unrestrained love that Grace showed. Model the Father's heart. Our final thoughts. Sometimes the most powerful thing that you can do is run toward what makes your heart roar and throw yourself into it with everything you've got. He will take great delight in you. In His love, He will no longer review you, but will rejoice over you, with seeing you. Now we'll have our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and tonight we have Braylon Howden, Chandler Howe, and Beverly Howe. So come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a resolution of esteem for Mr. Philip Bailey, if any of his family or Whereas our Heavenly Father in His infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Philip John Bailey, Sr. on February 23rd, 2025, and whereas His dedication to Montgomery County Schools for 20 years as a teacher were a living testament of His integrity and skill, and whereas His loss will be deeply felt by not only those with whom He served, but also throughout His entire community and county. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in His passing, that a copy of this resolution be conveyed to His family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Mr. Allen for other recognitions.
Thank you, Chair Mavis. We're going to be publicly recognizing our Teachers of the Year. We already had a ceremony with our retirement banquet, Teacher of the Year banquet, where we did this, but we want to always do it publicly. So can I get all of our Teachers of the Year to come in? From Candor, Mr. Chris Blake. From Green Ridge, Ms. Susan Strong. From Mount Gilead, Nicole Sherrill. I guess I'm talking loud enough, or maybe they're not here, I don't know. From Page Street, Ms. Melanie Taylor. From Troy, Amy Ellington. From Starr, Ms. Samantha Stewart. From East Middle, Mr. Kyle Green. From West Middle, Ms. Nora Beasley. From Montgomery Central, Mrs. Sarah Talbert. From Montgomery County Early College, Mr. Caleb Rushing. And from Montgomery Learning Academy, Mrs. Elizabeth Devine. So is everybody? And then just wanted to kind of go over the actual selections. So Mrs. Sarah Talbert's not here tonight, but she was selected as the runner-up, and Mr. Kyle Green from East Middle was our Montgomery County Schools Teacher of the Year.
Good night.
Congratulations to you all. And thank you for everything you do for our students. And so what we're, another thing that we do is we actually recognize our Employees of the Year. Please go down with Ms. Dr. Shaw. So we've got a bunch of different categories of employees that we recognize. So the first one is our Teacher Assistant of the Year, Mr. Jemarian Tally. Let's see here tonight. Oh, Ms., I'm sorry. I'm thinking of East Middle, Mr. Tally, I apologize. Congratulations on being our Teacher Assistant of the Year this year.
Good job.
Do you want to take a picture? Congratulations. Thank you. So our Office Support Employee of the Year is Mrs. Jennifer Loza. Our Bus Driver of the Year, Mrs. April Green. Our Custodian of the Year, Mr. Jeffrey Douglas. Our Data Manager of the Year, Ms. Courtney Wilson. And our Child Nutrition Employee of the Year, Ms. Cassandra Lible. I do have to say that tonight is one of my favorite board meetings because I love
being able to recognize our wonderful staff, rather, wonderful work that they do. Makes fun of celebrate perfect attendance, and this is a very hard accomplishment to have because, you know, we harp all year long on the importance of children being in our classes. This is equally as important for our staff in our classes every day, too, because when you have a child that has, you know, poor attendance and you couple that with a teacher that's not there, you're doubling the amount of classroom time that that child misses. So we try really hard to encourage our teachers, our principals, and all of our employees to be in class every day and to be at school every day, because to be present is to speak volumes. So we want to, we have quite a few staff members that were at school every single day this year, and we want to take just a few minutes to recognize them. So if I, when I call your name, if you'll come, you're going to get an apple for being here every day. Beverly Laster from Candor. Congratulations. Thank you. John Lechance from Page Street. Congratulations. Jennifer Nance from Page Street. Congratulations. Congratulations. And Megan, you got it last year, too, didn't you?
Yes.
Ms. Eunice Green from Mount Gilead. Ms. Green from Mount Gilead. Ms. Campbell from Mount Gilead. Congratulations. Thank you. Ms. Hannah from Mount Gilead as well. Congratulations. Ms. McRae from Mount Gilead. Ms. Parsons from MLA. And Ms. Parsons, this is two years in a row for you, too, right? Well, I'm sure it's more than two, but two does.
It's like forever years. It's like 11 years.
11 years.
She has it every year.
And then Mr. Sakoti from the Early College.
He's already on summer vacation.
Oh, perfect. Do you want to take his apple? There's his. Mrs. Hile from Montgomery Central. Ms. Macapogrey from Green Ridge. Ms. Taylor from Starr. Congratulations. And I think this is number two for you, right? Maybe more than that.
We'll see.
Wait, we gotta get a picture. Oh, sorry. You're good. Put an apple around me, proud. That's good. Thank you. Ms. Russ from Troy.
Nope. Okay. And Ms. Stille from Troy.
Yeah. I'll deliver on tomorrow.
Mr. Goglin from East Middle. Congratulations. This is several for you as well.
From Troy.
Ms. Kennedy from East Middle. Miss King from East Middle. Congratulations. And then if we can just get a big group picture. Thank you. Ms. Kennedy from East Middle. Congratulations. Ms. King from East Middle. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then if we can just get a big group picture. Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Paul, it's Eunice and Vanessa.
And I'm pleased to present to you tonight, we'll do it in English rather than.
I'm sorry. Spanish. Yeah, exactly. But this is important to know that the information that students receive about Butterfly House or the Stop Go Tell program is always available in English and Spanish reading only, which is necessary. So as I said before, I'm Joanna Frick, and I work in the Home Department, and I'm here to present Amy Yao and Jennifer Parsons from Butterfly House, which is a children's advocacy center that's part of Atrium Health. And they currently do work with first and fifth grade students in surrounding counties, and we've gotten to the point where our staff is familiar enough with what they already do for Montgomery County that Mr. Allen asked us to convert that to you tonight. So the ladies have folders for you, and rather than do a presentation that's a PowerPoint, they're just going to talk about what's in their folders. And I want to add that I taught three of her five children.
Oh, wow. She did.
We did nine lessons together.
We may be new to the meeting, but we're not new to the calendar. Well, as Jennifer, I will call her JP, because that's what we refer to her in the office. She passes those at our会给 her, "My name is Amy Yao, and I am the Director of the Butterfly House Children's Advocacy Center. God tasked me with this blessing a little over 20 years ago." Actually, this is a very big week for us. This is our 20-year birthday, Thursday. So I started the program June 5th of 2005, so we're excited to celebrate this week. You all are welcome to come celebrate with us. I'll tell you some more about that before we leave. But I'll talk real quick about the Butterfly House, just in case you guys have not heard about, heard about the Butterfly House. But essentially, what the Butterfly House is, is a children's advocacy center, who was the 15th accredited center in North Carolina. And what we do is we take referrals from law enforcement, Department of Social Services, medical and mental health professionals on children with any type of report of abuse. We see child sexual abuse is the number one that we see, or the high percentage of what we see. We see physical abuse that's led to violent crime, injury, endangerment. And what we do is we have started out by myself, and then I was able to get a victim advocate. I did forensic interviews, but essentially what we do is we do forensic interviews with these children, which is just a structured way to talk to them, to get them to tell us true facts of what has happened. It's a non-leading, non-suggestive way to get them to give us accurate accounts of things that have happened. And we're, we work very closely with law enforcement, Department of Social Services here in Montgomery County. We do have a MOU with Montgomery County, all the law enforcement agencies, CSS, mental health agencies, the school, Dr. Cagle sits on our team, as well as Ms. Haywood from the children, the nurse practitioner. So we do the forensic interviews while that's going, and we do victim and family advocacy, which is essentially just being with a non-opending caregiver, getting accurate accounts of what they know about the family, the history, but most importantly, putting all those pieces together to see how we can help them, to get them into some mental health counseling, to make sure that they have the resources and they need. And we do have a nurse practitioner on the staff now, and if she doesn't medical exams on all of our children, just a head-to-head physical exam, we don't do anything that hurts. So most kids are at our office about three hours when they come, but it really has enhanced prosecution rates. Most importantly, kids are resilient, we're getting them some treatment. I know you guys are biologically hereditary, and I could talk to them tomorrow, but I'm not, about the trauma that, especially child sexual abuse, has on children, as well as the other forms as well. So that's essentially what we are. And as I said, we're the 15th accredited in this state, now there's 15 more accredited centers in North Carolina. So I'm a part of the state board, truly love, love what I do. The grace of God gives us the ability to serve these kids, and again, one of the things that I just want you to take home is, is we do get help for these kids, they do really, we've seen a lot of great outcomes, and the prosecution rates have been great. So in 2018, we were blessed with a little extra money from the Youngest Crime Commission, which is kind of letting this downward spiral on the bag, but we were able to get a community health educator on staff. And when we did that, we were, we looked at a lot of different programs, and we turned to modern hours after a couple other places in the state called Stop Go Tell. So essentially, what Stop Go Tell is, is a program that we go into the schools to talk to the first and fifth graders about body safety. So JP is going to talk a little bit more about that, but what it is not, so I want to start with that, is it's not anything to try to get children to decide what gender they are, we don't talk about that at all. It's not anything about sexual education. It's literally body safety from head to toe, from, you know, what do you do when you're crossing the road? Hold your mom's hand. What type of safety things do you do? What, how do you keep your body safe? Drinking water, eating fruits and vegetables, wearing a bicycle helmet, you know, we talk about fire safety, all the things, but we do talk about body safety, and again, JP's going to talk a little bit more about that. I just, you know, again, we started, started developing the program in 2018. We began implementing it in 19, and since 2019, we have, we have been in front of over 9,900 kids in Stanley County Schools, first and fifth graders. And we've had 38 known disclosures, and of those 38 known disclosures, there's been at least, I'm pretty sure, five that have gone up. Yes. Were forced to prosecution, were perpetrators are incarcerated currently, I mean, we really advocate for these children. And again, that's 38 known disclosures. We do make sure that the guidance counselor's in there, but there's been more that's came out after. We just document it when we get a disclosure that day, and of course, we get through the proper mechanisms of reporting when they go along with the guidance counselor in the school, but these are just the ones that we know immediately, so we know there's more of them because our numbers have gone up. So anyway, I'm going to quit talking, I'm going to let JP give you some information. She is awesome with the kids. We've had great feedback from all of our schools, and we do hope to get the middle schools to a little bit because online stuff is so bad. I'm going to shut up and let JP talk. So like I say, you said, my name is Jennifer. I do go by JP because there's two Janors in all of us, and kids called me JP and just stuff. But I do go into all the first and fifth grade classes once we have received a sign permission slip back from the parents, which I'll attach along with the curriculum. Well, I don't know, so what I gave you guys, I want you guys to see what we give the children when they're in the classroom. So.
It's in their packet.
It's in their packet. Okay. So what I do with the first graders is I go in, again, like I say, you said, I focus on a child's entire body. I do not focus on private parts, and we don't go into a lot of details like that. I know there's a lot of hesitation with people in the public, but I focus on a child's entire body, head to toe, body safety. We talk about bullying, what to do if somebody does something to any part of your body, what should I do? I talk about trusted adults. That is something that I really focus on with the first grade class, helping them identify at least five trusted adults. Unfortunately, what we see more often than not is these kids are perpetrated not by the strangers. I do talk about stranger dating, but I also let them know anybody can make a bad decision to hurt your body. So I try to help them identify at least five adults that they can trust, that they can talk to, that they can go to if there's a problem. We talk about you need to have adults you live with, adults you don't live with. Just help educate these children, because they're the ones that's having to go through this stuff. Us as parents, we don't do so much, but kids are the ones that need to be safe and taking this information. So first grade, again, we talk about head to toe, body safety, keeping your body healthy, what to do if something happens to any part that you're not okay with. The trusted adults, I briefly talk about, like, you are in charge of you, like, you're a superhero. We have all the kids get, and you can model with you. All of the first graders, they get a superhero cape that says Stop Go Tell. Again, the whole point of us to be in there is to help give them the tools of what to do if something were to happen. So if, God forbid, something were to happen, then they know how to react. You can tell anybody to stop. You get away from them when it's safe, and you tell when you're trusting adults. If your firstborn's adult doesn't help you, you go tell another one. You tell as many people as you have to until somebody does something about your fault. So again, all the kids that get a superhero cape, which they absolutely want, and we do that at the end because it's very distracting to much first graders, a little superhero cape, but they all get a superhero cape, they all get a pencil, this is Stop Go Tell, and when they get a worksheet, that's what we just, again, we're kind of wrapping up with all the faces. We help them, like, I walk around with them, after I've had them the worksheet, and then they're like trying to draw the faces of their coach, or their parent, or grandma, whoever it might be, that they identify as a trusted adult. Because again, the whole purpose of this is to educate, to bring awareness, so how they, so they know how to react if, God forbid, something happens. Fifth graders, they do not get a cape, it's very cheesy, corny for them, and they don't like it. So when I go talk to them, they get a bookmark that you guys have, Stop Go Tell bookmark, and they get one of the braces. Again, we do the same thing, the same kind of curriculum, however, it was fifth grade numbers, so we focus more on online activities, and like, which apps are safe, while these apps are not safe, what to do if you're approached by somebody online, if you see something online you shouldn't. Again, it's just a very long, because I don't have a lot of time anyway. So I just go one time for first and fifth grade after the initiative. Trying to think, is there anything big that I have left out? One of the things that really flabbergasts me as a member of first, not just fifth graders, but first graders that are already on like TikTok and all the social media. So she really talks about her digital footprint and she really honed in on that in fifth grade, but she doesn't go over it since in first grade. And several years ago, every class in fifth grade that we did in Stanley County, every class, every single one, one kid, at least one kid come out and said that they had already been asked for an appropriate picture or had someone had sent one to them.
I had a first grade student tell me this school year, when we were briefly going over this stuff, about they were playing Roblox. Everybody has heard of Roblox, especially these children. That's one of the worst apps they can be on. But anyway, so the kid was telling me that he was on Roblox and I said, well, you don't talk to these people, do you? And he said, yes, I do. What do you mean you don't talk, like how? Because again, I'm thinking, this is a little first grader. They're not gonna be able to text stuff out. I don't know how well they can read. Like it really blew my mind when he said, yeah, I talked to him. What he was doing was he was taking his brother's headset, putting it on his head, and actually having conversations with strange adult people literally across the world. And this was a first grader, Stanley County, like, I mean, he's on the edge too, like maybe twenty-five minutes from here. And they have, they're innocent children. They have no idea. They let their guard down just as easy as they can, and they, they don't realize it. They'll slip up and like share too much about their location or their anything about themselves. So again, the whole purpose of our program is we don't focus on anything inappropriate, obviously, head to toe, body safety, how to be prepared, what to do if God forbid something like this does happen. So it's a very important program. We are very passionate about it.
Yeah, thank you guys for letting us come. If you have questions, we'll be happy to answer them. But just to bring it out home, we feel very passionate with adults and kids. Education is the key to prevention. We do have a large cape that we take in that the guidance counselor wants to kind of put it on. Because we also ask them, tell us, tell us some trusted adults that you know of. And often they say teacher, principal, as guidance counselor, mom says, whatever. But sometimes we let the guidance counselor model or just kind of wear it. And we also tell them, you know, here's your cape, but you always have that invisible cape in your pocket that you can pull out. No matter where you're at, you can always tell somebody to stop and go when you tell somebody. So we really hone in on that and boundaries. But you know, most importantly, education is key. You know, these first and fifth graders, their minds are vulnerable. You guys know that. These teachers and educators know how, you know, how, how some of those minds work. So we just got to make sure that they have the information so we can have good answers.
Does anyone have any questions though?
Who makes the decision on whether y'all meet with them or not? I'm not talking about the fine parents, but I'm talking about.
How the children come to us at our center or why we get involved? So we receive referrals from law enforcement, mental health providers, pediatricians, doctors, all facilities, DSS. If there's a concern, suspicion of any type of abuse or severe neglect or witness to a violent act or any of those. Yeah.
What's our bottom key in our policy? If the teacher suspects something, do they contact the office? And then we bring in social services?
Yeah, so all educators are mandated reporters, so they have to report immediately. Yeah, not in an email. It has to be, you know, face to face with the school counselor administration. Then we go with the chat command from there. That's part of our system.
So when I go in these classes, I never go in by myself. I always take the guidance counselor, the guidance counselor's line, and with some school personnel comes in. That's another set of eyes. Unfortunately, they like to like just spew out stuff at any point without me, and I'm trying to tell them, it's way till the end, you need to talk proudly. It's like some of these kids, literally, they're just waiting for somebody to tell them, this is not right. And it's like, because they don't know. A lot of these kids, it goes on for such a long period of time. And oftentimes, it's people that they know are the ones that are perpetrating the acts on. So, and what I tell the kids is abuse does not always hurt, but you guys, they have their guts. I don't use the word intuition, but they get like an uh-oh feeling. So if something's not right, you're going that way for a reason. Go find one of your trusted adults, and if it's one of your trusted adults that are making you feel that way, there's your other one. You were charged, it was all about empowering and educating.
Yeah, but I mean, Reagan.
That was the one.
So was the Butterfly House recently on Netflix? But, no. There must be another one that's very close to you because I've been doing that documentary.
Dragonfly.
Dragonfly, so Butterfly. Okay. Same kind of.
Yes, yes. Randy Reagan is the director there. She's one of my friends. Yes, they serve, they do.
Okay. So to give a little bit of background context, the Butterfly House reached out to us and came to do a presentation because again, they were asking if they could come in to our schools in the upcoming school year to implement the curriculum. We have seen, and y'all can provide data, but we have seen an uptick in referrals from Montgomery County to the Butterfly House. So they reached out to us to, again, see if that was a possibility. And that's why I asked them to come do a presentation so that you guys as a board can decide whether or not we want to implement this program in the fall.
I was at an event in Troy, not too long ago, with the Invictus Project. But I was there with the booths, charcoys, you know, we work with a lot of MDD partners, all with the same goal, to keep these children safe and educated. I did have several members asking, well, is this something like, I've never heard of this. Is this something you guys do in Montgomery County? And I'm like, well, not currently, but we're gonna work towards that. That's our goal. We do still serve the children. You guys can always call us if you have any questions. So I know that the curriculum itself is, I think, something that's designed for a lot of families in Montgomery County.
She's a parent too.
I do have two children in Montgomery County, and I think that they very much need this. Well, they did here, but I think that.
Their classmates.
Their classmates. I'm sure my daughter didn't give this entire question.
Any other questions for us? Thank you. Thank you for having us. Yeah, and seriously, in the packet is pretty much what JP gives out, minus the cape. We didn't, we didn't give the cape. And you have a panel card with the information, just kind of, this is the nuts and bolts of what we do. The phone number is on here. I don't mind entertaining any questions anytime about what we do, the referral process. And just to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Perkins said, it's just teachers are mandated reporters. And this is something that, again, I'm not giving a Butterfly House speech tonight, but something I will since I have a captivating audience. I always, because we are North Carolina citizens, and nineteen seventy-four state offices, we're all mandated reporters. So of course, teachers have to report. I know there's a process. But this really empowers kids to speak up, to speak out, to tell somebody. And you know, if it's a normal thing that's happened their whole life, they might not have known that it was wrong. So we have really, we have really been floored with the response that we have gotten in Stanley County with, with the children. And again, she's been reached out to. Stanley High Schools are already out, but she's already working on the program for the middle school coming up, which is coming near.
How do y'all get funding in the state, the local government, donations?
How long's you got? So we, we are, we are a part of Adrian Health Stanley. I would say, even when I started the Butterfly House, it was Stanley Memorial Hospital ran by people. We didn't, because we didn't have snowmen. We're, we're around then. We are, the hospital does that a lot, but I was told that through two thousand and nine, if you don't find your funding, it will shut you down. So essentially, I worked very hard. We obtained Governor's Crime Commission funding, which unfortunately, over the past five years, has gone down by about eighty percent. And then we do receive funds from the state through the Department of Children's Human Services, the grant. It is given to the North Carolina Children's Advocacy Centers, which is, we are also a member of that, and then they funnel it down. We have a non-competitive pot and then a competitive pot. So that, those are the two, our two biggest funders are the state and the Governor's Crime Commission, although that's gone down. We do, and probably some of you have heard of Stanley County Dancing with the Stars. And so in two thousand and nine, when we were told that at the end of the year, we started working with our advisory council slash fringe group, and we come up with Stanley County, or it's not really Stanley County anymore. We just changed it to Dancing with the Stars because we have Montgomery County Dance Dancing as well. And that usually brings in about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in kind of that help with the shortfall with the grants and stuff. So we, we do fundraise, we do community outreach, but, but we, we do, we do, we do feel very confident with our grants and that Adrian does support us, but we still have to, we still have to fundraise and make sure we have money, but then we're, make sure these kids get some of those services.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having us.
Thanks so much.
We can move on down to number five, called the Bachelor's Association of Public Policies.
Good evening again. Last month, there were lots of policies up for review. And tonight, we just need to vote on all of these policies that were concerning all of the, the major hall of policies from the policies that lead through the School Board Association. If anyone has any questions or concerns, I'll be delighted to answer that as well. But if not, we just need to take action to approve those policies.
Make a motion.
Well, I have a question.
Yep.
Dr. Shaw, in the school safety policy, section C says that the superintendent and each principal shall comply with all duties set out for their positions. As required by all the principal must inspect student's playgrounds and equipment. Should that include central office personnel?
Speaking of that policy number.
Policy.
So you're just asking if we should put central office in there as well?
Should someone in the maintenance department walk along that? Where the principals then go back to their desks and submit work orders based on what they find? Would it be more efficient to have maintenance personnel do that as well?
So the standard policy is, is the principals do that walkthrough and then coordinate that with the maintenance. If that's something that you feel like we should look into and examine the efficiency of that, we can subray that.
I was just asking if they would say, why would they have the maintenance?
I think that would actually prolong it because it would take long for maintenance to get out there and, and do the walkthrough with the principal. Yeah, the principal can get it done and then submit that work ticket.
And this policy is coming from the state school, and this is not a policy who can.
Right, the, the actual policy is that we can make changes to it any way that we want.
Right. Right.
Well, you might have changed it to something, so this is supposed to be done every day. So you might could change it to if you wanted the maintenance people to come out. What you want, but have fun.
Right.
Well, I think the issue with, like we saw with East Mill, is the lots of things that they reported, but then they follow up.
That was where my question.
One hundred percent agree.
Well, that's where the principal needs to reach out to the superintendent.
Dr. Blay, will you please share with me where you're reading that from, so I can follow along?
Uh.
I've got policy fifteen ten forty-two hundred seventy-two seventy.
Section C.
Section C, okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem if we want to insert the principal and district office representatives or maintenance representatives must inspect, you know, because it's just saying on a regular basis.
I mean, it could be a scheduled thing, like what you said, it could be like on a monthly basis where they require the management director or, I don't, I don't see any.
So here, here's my recommendation, is to approve it like this, and then we can get with Mr. Woodard, and we can then insert our language to better fit our business.
Can you check with principals as well and make sure that I'm not delaying the process? It's efficiency, but again, based on our school visits, there were concerns that had not been addressed, so.
So we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say, while we're on that topic, I would like to thank Mr. Woodard who's out there. I would like to thank the action that took place at East Mill. I happened to see some pictures of the eighth grade dance, and they had a big red carpet. Everybody had a picture there, and it like looked very nice. So we appreciate that.
Any other questions? I made a motion that we accept the DMS. Motion that some of theirs just said.
Second.
Second, Mr. Blake on the table. And then we'll, should we go back to that, Mr. Blake?
So, thank you again. So from our remarks tonight, I just wanted to kind of talk briefly about what happened last week. So I mean, as you guys know, we're, we're involved in our end of year testing for the year. We did begin administering our EOGs last week, and we will continue this week with those that are going to be retested. We've started our EOC administrations. But last week, just wanted to make you aware that all of the North Carolina K-12 schools faced an unexpected challenge during those administrations of the state EOGs and some districts while we're doing their EOCs. But there was a statewide technical failure in the state's online testing program. It was a significant disruption that, and it occurred in all school districts. It left students, teachers, and administrators scrambling to adjust. Despite the frustration, the confusion from that circumstance, our schools responded with resilience, patience, and professionalism. The issue stemmed from a statewide outage in the infrastructure that supports the test administration platform, which is NC Test. Many students were unable to log in, while others experienced crashes in the middle of the test. We were in the case that it crashed mid-test. So while the technical team for the state worked swiftly to diagnose and resolve the issues, of course, districts were forced to delay those assessments. So statewide, we did receive an email from Michael Mahler, Dr. Michael Mahler. So statewide, two hundred and nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five students were impacted by the platform outage. Some areas saw delays for forty minutes, and then others, like us, saw delays of up to ninety minutes. Because we did have one school that it went out at nine forty-five, and we got it back at eleven fifteen. But we continued testing. So because of that, I just want to extend my deep gratitude to the students who, after months of preparation, they showed remarkable composure in the face of that uncertain time. Sitting for a high stakes exam is never easy, very stressful. And having to do so amid technical failure is even more demanding upon them. So their focus, adaptability, and willingness to learn with changes did not go unnoticed. And we do appreciate their hard work. After we got everything back up and running, they were able to continue with that testing. And then I also want to wish the best of luck to the students who are still involved in testing this week.
Wait, let me ask you a question. Do you have any, and I know the state hasn't given any hard data yet, but do we have, you got a feeling for how the test scores are going to be?
That's hard to say at this point because we will not receive any of our site score data back until the fall because that was a, we're in a revision year with the standards and with the test, and then they will be renewing the scores throughout the summer. But I did, I have created a spreadsheet. I do a big tracking spreadsheet. And I've shared it with Dr. Roseborough and all the principals, so we're all looking at the data as it comes in. Right now, it's looking like if we remove the site scores from the pictures, and we're only talking about math and reading, we are up slightly. There's.
Compared to last year?
Yes, compared to last year, we are up slightly. That is without all of the high school testing being completed. But again, as we've been talking throughout the year, we are implementing the new CKLA curriculum, so we have seen some slight gains because of that. But as we have been looking at that and talking with the reps from Amplify, you really see the biggest gain in that third year of implementation. So we're hoping to see continued, you know, improvement over the coming years in that. So right now, yes, we are seeing a slight improvement on test scores. Of course, like any other testing year, we see some bright spots, and then we see some not so bright spots. And you can usually attribute that to some staffing changes or some issues that are going on from that personnel standpoint. But we'll, you know, talk more about that whenever the state validates the data, verifies it, so that we can actually proceed accordingly.
I'd like to say that I volunteered to Proctor in two different schools. And if you've never done that, you should consider it. I think, I think I told Ms. Rollin that I might do it every five years. It is.
It's very trying.
It is, it's very trying, but, but seriously, watching the commitment of the staff at the schools I was at, the teachers, the students, everybody took it seriously, everybody. the, the teachers, the students, everybody took it seriously, everybody was composed. I didn't, even, I was there when the outage happened, and there were some light eyes, but everybody was calm, and I totally agree that everyone did a great job.
It's, it's difficult to keep third or fifth graders, even middle school kids, in a testing session not knowing how long the test will be at, because they can't talk to each other, because if they do, the state will say, oh, they're trying to share answers. So they had to sit there in their room, and they had to sit there quiet, because they couldn't talk to their friends. And again, some of our schools experienced 90 minutes of that. And then we had to communicate with principals to facilitate lunches, because we would have to pause the test. The kids had to go eat their lunch in silence, and then come back to the testing session. It was a very trying effort.
And it's all online now.
It's not paper pencils, so it's, it is, it's very trying. But they, like I said, the schools that I was in, everybody handled it very well. So you could tell they knew what their procedures were, they had been, they had been shown what to do, so, very good. Do we have anything else before we go to the floor?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda I presented.
I have, I have a motion and a second round discussion.
I must abstain from the voting to prevent the confirmation of this.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we want to make sure the report is abstained, Dr. Blay is abstaining, okay?
I'm making the motion to go.
Your ladies adjourn.
So.
Your second is played, all favor.